And welcome to the City Council meeting, January 15, 2024. I ask that you all rise for the singing of our national anthem. Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise to north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our national anthem. We now like to take the opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Cree, Dene, and Métis people as their original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty 8 territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Thank you for that. We'll now move on to the adoption of the previous council minutes and I'll recognize councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held December 11th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with questions or concerns, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the next item of business, I'll recognize councillor Bressi.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton, figuring out the...
Option of our agenda, please.
Sorry, figuring out the new technology. I move that council adopt the agenda as presented but with the addition of item 7.1, public member appointments.
Thank you for that. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the delegation portion of our meeting, there were no delegations identified for the 3:00 PM session. There are delegations for the evening session. A reminder for those who might be watching online, if you would like to come to speak to council, there is a relatively easy process. You go online, fill out a form, let us know ahead of time you're coming, and then you can choose either the 3:00 PM session or if we are having an evening session, there is an option there as well. Moving on to number, sorry, rather, number seven of today's agenda reports, we're moving into item 7.1, recognize councillor Bosch.
Thank you. I move that we appoint Curtis Valentine to the Community Advisory Committee for a term ending December 31st, 2026.
Thank you for that councillor Bosch. That is in order. And a reminder for those who are watching, you can online see when council is appointing or looking for committee members. If you are interested, please submit your application. At this point today, we're just appointing one member as the recently we appointed various other committee members. So I'll call the question on that. Okay, I didn't, so there we go. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to committee business for today. First item of business under committee business is the council committee of the whole, held December 13th, councillor Blackmore.
I move that we approve the minutes of the council committee of the whole, held December 13th.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with concerns, errors, or omissions that may have been in the package, I will call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving right into our standing committees, they're first recognizing the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting, and I'll recognize councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting, held January 9th, 2024, as presented.
All right, that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Some highlights from your meeting councillor O'Connor.
Yes, give me a second, your worship. Okay. Major projects, phase three construction of the Coordinated Care Campus is currently on schedule for expected completion in early February. Municipal department are planning to move in over the next few weeks. Grand Prairie Police Service, if I can get my teeth to work. Enforcement services and mobile outreach have now moved under the direction of the Grand Prairie Police Service. Enforcement services work is underway with marketing to prepare a web-based animal license campaign to educate and encourage pet owners to license their animals. This program assists with reuniting families with their lost pets by creating a registry with contact information. Revenue from animal licensing supports our regional animal pound and affiliated partners by covering the costs associated with food, medicine, and maintaining a safe and humane space for lost cats and dogs. The annual candy cane check stop took place in December. RCMP, the cram the cruiser event took place at the local grocery stores recently. As usual, the residents of Grand Prairie and area were generous in their support of the food bank cramming four police SUVs full. The fire department, the Alberta Fire Chiefs Association was provided with two positions on the upcoming Emergency Medical Services Standing Committee announced by the premier. Deputy Chief Mark Van Werkhoven will be filling one of the two positions. Work continues on the integration of fire and police dispatch services. The Grand Prairie Firefighters Charitable Foundation was able to fundraise over $100,000 for the community in 2023. Congratulations to them. Community and social development, administration reviewed and approved seven applications in December for community building youth futures. Dispensing over 3,000 per essential items such as Chromebooks, welding gear, work gear, and these resources aim to alleviate barriers for youth in accessing education and employment opportunities. Individuals age 55 and up are encouraged to register for one of the upcoming Aging Well Together open houses. Service gaps and successes will be viewed through tabletop exercises and discussion. Homeless and housing and homelessness initiatives, Fletcher House is 90%, and I've heard it's even higher than that now, at capacity, and all tenants are settling in well. The Mustard Seed has hired the manager for the Coordinated Care Campus and held a job fair a few weeks ago. They are set to assume operations of facility on February 1st. Community knowledge campus, the holiday campaign was very successful with overall sales growth of 69% from 2022 to 2023, and December 2023 numbers showed a total of 7,485 members, which surpasses our highest pre-COVID total of 7,200 in 2019. And the Under-9 hockey tournament will take place two weeks ago with 36 teams participating. The process is underway to hire additional lifeguards and aquatic assistants. And under sports and development wellness and culture, Northwest Polytech hosted a basketball tournament at Charles Spencer's last month, hosting 10 teams, and final preparations are underway for the Alberta Winter Games. Volunteers are still required. Nominations are open for the Northwest Alberta Sport Excellence Awards and can be submitted online. Thank you so much for letting me put this tomb of report together. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thanks for that. Moving on to Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting of January 9th, I'll turn this one over to councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting, held January 9th, 2024, as presented.
Thank you for that motion. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting councillor O'Toole?
I do. Technology has improved since we last met. Under the service area update, I've got corporate communication. Promotion efforts are underway for the Women of Influence Awards nominations, the Grand North Winter Festival, and the Alberta Winter Games. Community engagement work is underway for the Inclusive and Caring Community Workshops. Access GP received over 59,000 inquiries through phone, email, et cetera, in 2023. To date, 220 residents have signed up for the city's new texting service, which is a service that you can sign up for and will give you updates on numerous things amongst the city. Intergovernmental affairs, administration is assisting the Grand Prairie Local Immigration Partnership with advocacy on biometrics. Under human resources, the careers website has had over 3,500 views in the last quarter. Work is underway for the city's annual application for the federal summer student grant, and the request is for approximately $400,000. Last year, $160,000 was received from summer students, or for summer students. And a memorandum of understanding has been signed between the city and Inclusive Alberta to support the inclusive hiring of individuals with mental limitations. A grant has been applied for to offset the cost for this initiative. Under corporate marketing, administration has been successful in attracting several sponsors for free skates at the Design Works Centre. The branch, the brand refresh is on track for launch in February, and the New Year's evening was out, out was a very successful. And just to talk a little bit more about that, the Grand North was cold, but it was very exciting, and people that showed up were very impressed. And with that, that's my report.
Thanks for that councillor O'Toole. Moving on to the Operational Services meeting of January 9th, and I'll turn that one over to councillor Blackmore.
I thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting, held January 9th, 2024, as presented.
Thanks for that motion. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Highlights from your meeting councillor Blackmore.
There are a few things I can highlight. Engineering, the tender for road rehabilitation and overlay program phase one has been closed. Facilities and energy, additional warranty work at the East Link Centre is now complete, and the Commercial Clean Energy Program is scheduled to launch in March. People who are interested in that can refer to the website. Parks and Environment sees that their administration continues to build ice at outdoor rinks and the Montrose Cultural Centre Oval, and that ice is definitely frozen now. And in Transportation Administration is responding to the first major snowfall of the season, and if anyone has seen snowplows and gravel trucks out there hauling snow, you've never seen a happier group of people ever when it's been 40 below. So they are happy to be to work. And that concludes my report.
Thanks for that councillor Blackmore. Moving on to the Financial Administration Services Committee meeting of January 9th, and I'll look to councillor Plot for introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd just make a motion that we accept the minutes of the Financial Administrative Services Committee meeting, held January 9th, 2024, as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Councillor Plot in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Councillor Plot, you had one item of business today.
Yeah, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to make a couple motions. Do you want me to do them separately, or should I do them together?
Yeah, you bet. Do them separately.
Can I just...
And sorry councillor Bosch?
Thank you. I will recuse myself. Thank you.
Councillor Bosch will give councillor Bosch a minute to remove herself from the council chambers. A potential perceived conflict of interest, so I'll now recognize councillor Plot. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. My first motion is to council direct administration to bring the 2024 Business Improvement Area, the BIA, budget to the city council meeting on March 11th, 2024, for review and approval.
All right, that motion is in order. Discussion or debate on that budget review. Seeing none, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Councillor Plot.
Not sure why, not seeing my other motion coming up in the scrub here, sorry.
Sorry? If you happen to click on the staff report, or the...
Yeah, I'll go onto the staff. Sorry, one moment. Council direct administration to notify the businesses within the BIA of the above date by letter accompanied by a copy of the proposed 2024 BIA budget.
So that motion is in order to direct administration to notify the businesses of the BIA of the above date by letter accompanied by a copy of the, with a copy of the budget. Opportunity for discussion or debate, seeing none, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Councillor Plot in favor?
And that carries unanimously. So I'll give councillor Bosch a moment to get back, and councillor Plot, do you have any highlights from your meeting?
Yes, other than the business arising, we had a survey salary update with Chief White Way. Finance administration is working through the year-end procedures to prepare for the 2023 audited financials. An assessment of taxation or a recalculation for tax installment payments will be occurring soon. Property enrolled in the program should receive a letter with their updated payment amount. Under procurement, administration is working through year-end activities. In 2023, there were 135 competitive bids issued with an award valued of $39 million, and 67.5% of the award value was to businesses in the Grand Prairie area. That's my report.
Thank you for that councillor Plot. Moving on to the Invest GP Committee meeting of January 9th, and I will look to councillor Blackmore.
I would ask council to adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee meeting, held January 9th, as presented.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Highlights from your meeting councillor Blackmore.
Yes, we have had a few things happen in economic development during the month of December. Eleven new home-based businesses and 13 new commercial businesses licenses were issued in the city. Recent statistics for the rural renewal stream program include 560 candidate endorsement letters issued. There are 22 currently in progress. 703 employer applications received, including 18 in the queue for review, and 449 positions are available. The 2023 retail market and gap analysis report showed that the total trade area was over 295,000 and retail catchment area spending was over $5 billion. Administration released the latest regional workforce survey and report done through Deloitte. This study shows that the majority of workers are satisfied with the region as a place to work. That would be 92% satisfied, and with quality of life, 86% were positive. Regional workforce development partnership steering group are using these data-based learnings to inform the attraction and retention work we have underway. Last week, administration and the mayor assisted Alberta Health Services in a physician recruitment tour, successfully securing a new physician to join the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital this spring. In investment attraction, administration is preparing for ICSC and Whistler with updated and updated opportunities book and other marketing materials. And for people who wonder what that acronym is, it is a Shopping Centers of Canada. Our work continues with, on the investment attraction action plan and pitch book and coordination for joint events under consideration for the 2024 year with regional partners. In events and entertainment, of course, the Grand North Winter Festival was just this previous weekend. There were plans made and carried out to move numerous things indoors to accommodate the cold weather. Benet's Energy Corporation will be hosting their grand opening for the Benet's Energy Suite after a $250,000 investment by the naming partner in the renovation of the corporate suite. The Troyanda's Malanca Celebration will take place on January 29th, sorry, January 20th. Tickets go on sale for the Alberta Winter Games through the Benet Center today, January 15th, and opening ceremonies for the games will be held at the Benet's Energy Center on February 16th. The Passionate Hearts event will be hosted February 14th in the Bose Family Gardens. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks for that councillor Blackmore. Moving on, there's no items of correspondence, no delegation business today, and no notices of motions, so we will now have a recess. We'll be back at 6:00 PM. See you then. So we will now have a recess, we'll be back at 6:00 PM, see you then.
Turn your mic on, give you a couple of minutes to get set up. Once you're ready, take five minutes to address council in regards to your concern. And then council will have an opportunity for questions. Following that, delegation business is dealt with at the end of our meeting. So you're welcome to stick around, but for now, welcome if you could introduce yourself and your guests and then take five minutes to address council. Thank you.
Good evening all. I'm Aravind Rupana and my partner Sanjay Singhal here. And we were here last month, I believe. And I would like to know what you think for the last meeting? If there's any conclusion, any solution for it? Do you guys have that? Any answer on it?
Okay, so I'm actually going to ask Mr. Lemieux if he could help me out here in regards to follow-up conversations that administration may have had with Mr. Rupana as I'm not aware of where we're at with that conversation.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. So we brought some information back for council's consideration after the delegation and there was no motion that came out of that. So we're not planning on making any revisions to the vehicle for hire bylaw at this particular time. There certainly may be a review in the future, but right now, we're not planning on making any changes.
Perfect. Thank you for that update. So there's your answer, Mr. Rupana.
Because it still keeps happening and today I saw another cab company opened by the one vehicle only, which should be a minimum seven at least when we last time spoke here.
Okay, so I think that's a great conversation that you could have with administration in regards to your concerns with service. But in regards to changing the expectation, council heard your concern. Administration brought back a report to the appropriate standing committee and there was no change in service or expectations supported by committee or council at that time.
Okay, and also add you all aware about the ruler program here for the new immigrants? And it's shut down or it's only 25% now, right? There's a limit of 25%?
Sorry, could you ask me that again?
There was a rural stream program in Grand Prairie, right?
Rural renewal stream, yeah.
And it's a 25% right now. And because of there's not enough work and we can't support them. And why there's a rideshare now in the city of Grand Prairie when there's 300 cab drivers available? And we are under 100,000, we are not even 100,000 population yet in Grand Prairie and we have only 70,000, 74,000 people here.
So, sorry, I'll address your first question in regards to the rural renewal stream. I think your assumption is that the 25% subscription is where you're analyzing the success rate at, is that correct? There was 400 businesses that were approved, 300 jobs were offered. And at that point, 110 job offer letters went out to individuals who are interested. Our roles in municipality is receiving the designation from the provincial government is to be the conduit to that program. We are not out there making sure that individuals move to our community. We are connecting businesses who were looking for people to offer jobs and that's what our role was and we will continue that program. And if the people move to our community that are approved, then that's a great win for us. That's all we've done.
But our Canadian culture is soon our kids are turned 14 and they go and do some work at the Tim Hortons or McDonald's. And what about our kids gonna learn now? Where they going to work in the future?
So I think that it would be fair to say that Canada is in a need, a great labor shortage right now, that there is significant jobs for youth in our environment that are looking for jobs. Who an employer hires is up to the employer. And right now, this program is being supported by the provincial government to bring immigrants to our country for jobs that typically teenagers aren't looking to do. Hospitality and retail jobs are very undersubscribed in the application process and this is not our program. If you have concerns with immigration programs, I suggest you reach out to the provincial or federal government. I'm happy to address your other concern as well in regards to rideshare. This council is not in a position to deter business from happening in our community. We are not going to say, at this point, we've never made a decision to limit the number of entrepreneurial opportunities for people. Rideshare companies exist because they choose to get into that business. We are not currently, and to my knowledge as council, will not be restricting the number of people that enter into a market. So I'm not quite sure what you're asking in regards to why the cab companies continue to happen. And that has not been a mandate of this council to restrict businesses in our community.
Because soon the summer comes in and it will be, cab business will be very, very slow. And my son, he goes to the university and how I'm gonna afford his fees, that's my question.
Okay, well, how you afford, how you spend your money, I think is your decision. I'm not really sure of the point of your delegation here today. Your five minutes has passed and I'm happy to have these conversations with you at another time, but realistically, I don't know exactly what you're looking for today.
We are thinking to put a cap on the rideshare because they're killing our job.
Okay, so if you choose to diversify your own company, I think, I suggest that you follow up with business licensing and enforcement services to see if that's an opportunity for you. This is not the business licensing opportunity to come to speak to council and ask for permission about expanding your business.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, guys. My name is Taya Prabhas. I'm just trying to hear kind of translating what the question here is. I guess their concern with these guys is that they've been here for 25 years, they have family, friends and whatnot, all here, 300 people working for their cab company, a lot of people that depend on them and they're trying to understand, I think they're just better trying to understand the bylaws around rideshare. Is there a cap? Like what is the requirements of how to rideshare operate here? Like they're trying to make sure they can protect their own business and understand the guidelines and bylaws pertaining to kind of rideshare and...
Yeah, the rideshare policies are quite clear and so I'll ask that some of our administration reaches out with restrictions and limitations and opportunities with rideshare. And so that can get emailed to you and then you can have that conversation in regards to what's possible. I just do see another councillor that has a question, councillor Blackmore.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. As the mayor has said, we've never been in the position at this council to restrict what businesses can start or end in the city. The only way to do that would be through a taxi commission. And whenever that subject has come up within your own industry, the answer has been you don't want a taxi commission, you want the ability to start your own businesses and run the number of cabs that you see fit. And so if you're asking us to restrict the number of cabs, including rideshare on the road, it would come through a taxi commission. So if that's something that you wish, then you would need to come forward to administration at a different time and make that request. And we would debate it at council chambers and make the decision yea or nay. But that is the only way to restrict the number of cabs on the road and it may not be to your advantage for that to happen.
Yes, that's what we're looking for.
Then probably the best place, Mayor Clayton, would be for them to meet with our CEO to further that discussion?
Yeah, I think we can arrange that for sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next delegation this evening, item 13.2, Mr. Daryl Huko. I apologize if I'm miscorrectly pronouncing your last name. Please come on up, take a couple of minutes to get yourself set up. The microphone is on. As with the other delegation, please introduce yourself for those who might be watching at home. And then once you make your five-minute presentation, council will have an opportunity for questions, so welcome.
All right, thank you. You said my name correctly, Daryl Huko. I'll just take four, somebody ding me at four minutes, I'll give a minute for...
I'll let you know for sure.
Yeah, thanks very much. Okay, I'm speaking about, specifically to Dylan Brassi today, about an issue that went on with the protests as you described it. I happened to go to the thing, I've read this beforehand, went there and I've listened to other people speak on this matter. Just specifically, I'm looking for an apology from you to me personally. I'm not an organizer of the event, I was there, I'm a participant, I'm a dad, a grandpa, lived here since 1980 and yeah, 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 all this stuff goes, I've been here before as well. So you said some things that, you know, were questionable, they would be less questionable had you been right. And essentially, some of this stuff comes off just basically as making me and a lot of other people feeling worthless if they'd have gone, if read this and gone on with it. You speak of people as a protest and everybody else that you talk of that wasn't there as community and members and all the nice sort of stuff. I would feel worthless if I didn't know what went there, all that sort of stuff, taking it to heart here. There's a protest tomorrow, the message some members of our community will be hearing out of it, and right there, stop there, that's a false prophecy, it ends up being a lie. You're not welcome here, and you don't have the right to be safe. I never heard that. All right? And there was a group that was standing on the corner, I call them, I don't know who they were, they were gathered, I think, by you and some other group, I think you mentioned here. They were very loud, I didn't record them and stuff, I had a respect for them and dignity, they're just hollering out a bunch of stuff I'd be ashamed of saying. All right? So, we withstood that. And the thing is, is that this message was coming from me somehow, that I was there? I went to the whole thing, this coming out of here, you're not welcome here? Did I say that to anybody or meant that to anybody in the community? Come on, man. And I don't have the right to be safe? This is a message because they will hear, another lie. And because there's a very real harassment and abuse of our two SL, and I went on, I'm not even gonna let us here, but just quickly, I thought, I'll look up what you're talking about. Two-spirit, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning intersex, bisexual, pansexual, agender, genderqueer, bigender, gendervariant, pangender. That's just so far, that's just public Canadian stuff. Sometimes spills into threats and violence, which makes me so incredibly angry and stuff like that. There's laws already protecting lots of people, all of us from that. There's no threats or violence that happened on that. That you're sad and angry, that's fine, I'm sad and angry and lots of things happen, but that you described me in a manner that was presenting this to the community, and the 400 or 500 people that were there, kids and stuff, we rerouted around the group of people that were agitating. All right? And through the park, the hill and stuff, and cross three intersections because we didn't go through the group of people that were making noise, you know? And like, this is horrible. And so, you stood along, community and stuff, and you go on talking about some promotions and stuff, it's great. And you speak for the whole community when you say this, you're welcome here and everyone deserves to be safe. Well, why pit that against us? Why don't you just say, I think air is good? The whole community believes that too. I think punching seals is wrong. I say that as well too. Why do you throw that in there as a comment against me and people like me? We're just people that lived here, you know? And people are people, the rights, health, and safety, and all this stuff goes on. And the rights, and the only thing that's not mentioned here is, by the way, was the thing was about, it was parental rights of concerns, and specifically elementary schools. That's it. Just parental rights in the schools. Their kids, right? They pay for the kids, the parents, the school boards, you guys, everybody along the way, and the kids when they go home and before they go to school and everything else. That's it. But there's no one mentioned here like that. Nothing. And you have a chance to apologize, and you haven't. So, I'll give you the last minute that I've got, either in silence, or you can apologize, and I'm done after that. So, you've got a minute?
Thank you for your...
My last minute is to be now recognized, starting now, and in silence, you can respond with an apology to me if you like. Other than that, we'll just sit here for 60 seconds, I'll get up, tell me when the minute's over. Thank you.
So, Mr. Huko, thank you for your presentation. Now is the time for council to ask questions if they choose...
My presentation isn't over. I'm using 60 seconds.
So, Mr. Huko, now is the time for council to ask you questions if they choose so, and then delegation business is dealt with at the end of our meeting. So, Councillor Blackmore, you are in the queue. Is it from now or...? Okay, go ahead, Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I just noticed on the application that you made to be a delegation tonight, you make the statement that you'll comment on Mr. Bressi's post and subsequent statements made about you as an attendee of the Million Man Watch. But in all the information that I've managed to come up with, Mr. Bressi never does mention you by name or even by indication in any way of who you are. So, I am uncertain why you are here asking for a personal apology when he was not directing his comments at you.
The comments, the comments were directed to a protest. He didn't mention human beings, they're referred to everywhere else except to us, okay? I didn't, I'm not representing the group per se, I went to the protest. I didn't, I mentioned it on there just for frame of reference, so everybody knew. All right? I'm not representing them, so I didn't check the thing, am I representing a group? I'm representing me. I was defamed, made to feel worthless from your comments that went out. All right? And that's why I'm asking for the other people who've asked for you to acquiesce. You won't. And so, I'm just talking to you just personally, I'm a guy here, you shouldn't have written this stuff. It's not true. Parts that are just plain and out lie, false, I don't know, we'll get into whatever. And you didn't acknowledge what this thing was even about. And so, I'm asking for an apology from you because you've had chances, people have approached you from the group to acquiesce and stuff, and it still stands here as a scar in our community. All right? And I won't bring up other stuff, I won't get into my five minutes, but that's why I'm here. I feel that I am, okay? Was personally, you had a chance to speak directly to a group, and you didn't. And it still stands here as a big thorn, you know? Do you stand for parental rights in schools? Like, that's gotta be something of value here, like, this is all against that. And that's not even mentioning what this was about. If I was to read this, you can't help but feeling pretty worthless if you're gonna stand for anything against what you declare as to be whatever, and it wasn't even about this. And I hate messaging stuff. So, that's why I'm here. I didn't need any, you know, thank you for your question, your interest, maybe that helps you explain things. I'm an individual, I went there, taxpayer here, taxpayer in the county as well. All right? And this was not needed to be written, and it should have been retracted when you had a chance, all right? Publicly to the group. So, I'm here as an individual, all right? And that's why I wanted to give him 60 seconds. I think that's easy enough, it was just, basically, I get this as a public forum and that it took place, and here it is. And everyone had a chance to read it, I don't want a public apology, just here it is, you can take the 60 seconds, say nothing, I don't care. Doesn't matter. But I wanted to say my piece, thank you for hearing it.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Huko.
Do I still have the 60 seconds, or that doesn't happen?
There's no one else in the queue, so your presentation is done, and delegation business is dealt with at the end.
So, a moment of silence isn't allowed in a presentation.
Sure, but you've more than used your five minutes.
Yeah, but I actually stopped me at four so I could use it, and then you interrupted it.
You want me to sit here for 60 seconds, and then you'll walk?
I had asked you for it, so this gentleman here...
Happy to time 60 seconds for you.
Had a chance. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
On our agenda next is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business, we'll move into public hearings. Tonight, we have two public hearings. First one being 15.1 land use bylaw amendment C-1260-178. I'll call this public hearing to order, look to an introduction from administration, and I'll turn this one over to Mr. Johnson and Ms. Downing.
You wanna plug that in if there's a spot? Oh, wait. Just, this thing has to be a little way over here, it left this thing...
Yeah, there we go.
Plug that one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Administration has received an application to amend the land use bylaw in order to re-designate 24 hectares of land from combined residential, general residential, small lot residential, and restricted residential to urban reserve. The subject property is in the Signature Falls neighborhood, north of 68th Avenue and west of 84th Street, which is also Range Row 55. It is 24 hectares of undeveloped land, which has not been subdivided or serviced. The property is primarily surrounded by residential, country residential, and agricultural uses. The Signature Falls outline plan was adopted in 2006. The outline includes details about future land use, transportation planning, tentative subdivision, municipal reserve dedication for parks and schools, and future development of the sites will be required to align with the OP as shown on your diagram here. The applicant seeks to rezone to UR with the intention of utilizing the property for extensive agricultural uses. They are currently haying the land, and this amendment would bring that use into conformance with the land use bylaw. The application was circulated to internal and external agencies, advertised on the city's website, a sign was posted on the property, and letters were mailed to adjacent neighbors. Administration recommends that council give three readings to bylaw C-1260-178. Thank you, and I am now available for questions.
Perfect. Thank you for that opportunity for questions for administration, council. Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. If this is rezoned tonight, other than haying the land, would there be any kind of restrictions in place perhaps if somebody wanted, you know, 300 cattle there, or a hog farm, or anything that is not as easy to live around? Particularly the hog farm, not so much the cows.
Ms. Downing, can you address the limitations and the opportunities in that change?
Thank you through the mayor. Something like a hog farm is regulated by the provincial government and is restricted in the city in general. There is no opportunity for that use. However, grazing of animals under the current extensive agriculture is something that is potentially a use. It's, in our administration's view, low risk as the, that it's an unlikely use for the land because of the probability of that being a good use for the applicant, they would have to fence off the entire property and worry about their animals and transport them and so on and so forth. But yes, it is potential that it could be used for something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Blackmore.
I was looking through your notes because I saw something on there earlier that indicated a more extensive type of agriculture than haying, and I'm wondering if that was simply because you have to use the correct terms, or there actually is a potential for, say, grain farming or livestock grazing or...
Ms. Downing?
Yeah, thank you through the mayor. The use in the land use bylaw is extensive agriculture, so it does include, you know, grain farming and grazing of animals, and that would be the use that they would fall under.
So, in your discussion with the landowner, has he indicated what he is intending to do?
Thank you through the mayor. He is currently already haying the land as a method of weed control, and the intention is to continue doing what they have already been doing on the land.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. So, I see no further questions from council for administration. I'll now open it up for an opportunity for those who may be here to speak in support of this land use bylaw amendment. I will give them a minute, Mr. Rossler, a minute to get set up, and for those who might be watching at home, just please introduce yourself.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and council. Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering here on behalf of the landowner, applicant for the amendment. Just, I've been here a few times regarding these amendments, so I don't think I'll go into too much details to the reasons and rationale for doing it. What I have confirmed with the developer though, that they don't have any intentions at this time to get down the road of uses that are kind of undesirable to the neighborhood adjacent and whatnot. So, the intention is to just legally be able to do what they're, I guess, already kind of doing. So, we'll see where that goes, and it, you know, currently, it's not, there's nothing out there that's obtrusive or intrusive to any of the adjacent neighbors, and I think they fully intend on keeping it that way. So, this is more just, it's an unfortunate circumstance that there are some uses within UR that are maybe not perfect for neighbors, but so far, they're a land developer, so their intentions currently are to just wait until the economy comes to the point where they are able to utilize their land to the full its potential. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I see no one in the queue, so thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
I will now ask a second time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this submission. And there's nobody online, to my knowledge, and so, I will ask a third time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this land use bylaw amendment. I will now ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this land use bylaw amendment. I will ask a third, second time rather, if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to this land use bylaw amendment. If so, please come forward. And I'll ask a third time if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this land use bylaw amendment. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and look to business arising, recognizing Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-178, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you for that, Councillor O'Connor. That motion is in order, no discussion or debate on first reading. So, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Councillor O'Connor.
Yes, I'd like to move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-178.
Thank you. That motion is in order, opportunity for discussion or debate, recognizing Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll be brief because we did have this conversation not too long ago, but for me, I still can't support it, I can't vote in favor of zoning bylaws for this. I really do support the intention, I really do think that we should be allowing light, low-intensive agricultural use on this land to control weeds and to make the land productive while it's waiting for development, but I don't think rezoning is the way to do it. I really respect that the current landowner, and I trust, doesn't have a desire to do anything that would be incompatible with residential uses that are very close to this property. But if this land doesn't develop, we don't develop, we don't know who's gonna own it in 10, 15, 20 years. And I think that we should not be zoning land that allows for uses that should not be close to houses through this process. So, I know we're having other conversations about are there other ways to allow this to happen without rezoning? I'd support those, but I can't support this bylaw tonight.
I'll recognize Councillor O'Toole.
So, I just have a question, it was brought up to me a little while ago. If, in the state of farming, there's need to have heavy equipment as well as spraying, would there be a requirement to the landowner to send notices out when the spraying would be done?
So, sorry, the opportunity for questions for administration was earlier, I will allow it, but typically, that's done prior to discussion or debate on the business arising. Can Mr. Johnson or Ms. Downing answer Councillor O'Toole's question?
Thank you through the mayor. There is no requirements under the current land use bylaw under that use. There is spraying for weeds as well that could be occurring on that land, and again, there would be no requirements for notification if that were the use that was, the reason for spraying.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Councillor O'Connor, you are in the queue, but I'm assuming it's just from earlier? Okay. Councillor Blackmore.
I am going to speak in favor of the motion because I appreciate that land should not be left to be unproductive. And haying and the production of hay is of extreme value to the people who live in this neighbor, in this region. Not in the neighborhood where there's residents, but in the region where we have livestock farmers who are always looking for more supply of hay. And so, for that reason, I will support the motion. However, Councillor O'Toole raised a question, and can I ask administration a further question about that?
Sure, let it once now, we'll just open it...
I know, you open the door, and they just go on.
Go ahead.
If the land was not changed to urban reserve, would this landowner be required to notify the neighbors if they were spraying for weeds?
Ms. Downing? Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, to add to Ms. Downing's comments, there are no requirements in the land use bylaw. Admittedly, there may be rules and regulations out there that we're not aware of with respect to notification when applying herbicides, but we're not aware of any. There may be other municipal or perhaps even provincial requirements, but we don't know that. So, I would say on that point, then, the rezoning would be irrelevant if they're planning on spraying.
That was what I suspected. I would like to see us still find... I, I would like to see us still come up with a better solution for vacant land that should be hayed, but we haven't managed to do that yet, so this is our tool available today, so I do support the motion.
And I see no one else in the queue, so I'm going to call the question on second reading. And that's carried unanimously. Councilor O'Connor.
Yes, Mayor Clayton, I'd like to move council have third reading of bylaw C 1260-178 at this meeting and to speak to this. I think it's important that what Mr. Bressi was mentioning needs to be handled in a different venue, and this is not the place to do that. If there needs to be a caveat put on the land to say if the ownership changes, I would be, look to see somebody do that, but I do not believe this. So I'd really appreciate if we would support this motion today so we can move forward and allow the, the developer to move on and save himself some money.
All right, so this is a motion to have third reading here tonight, must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading. I see no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd have council give third reading to bylaw C 1260-178 be an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I see no one in the queue, so I'll call the question on third reading of bylaw C-1260-178. And that is carried. Moving on to item 15.2 Municipal Development Plan C-1462. Give me one moment here, please. I will call this public hearing to order, and I will look to administration for introduction. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Good evening, council. We are here to present bylaw C 1462, which is a review of the city's municipal development plan. A municipal development plan, otherwise known as an MDP, is a statutory plan prepared by a municipality under the authority of the Municipal Government Act. All municipalities in Alberta are required to adopt an MDP. They are the highest level statutory plan approved by municipal council, and it serves as a guide to other statutory plans, master plans, and development decisions. It sets the vision and can be seen as the overarching strategic plan directing the community's future growth and development. This review ensures that the vision and policies of the MDP continue to be relevant by incorporating council's strategic plan as well as public input. The revised MDP carries forward the vision statement and guiding principles from the current MDP, all of which were developed through extensive community consultation. Council originally adopted the MDP in 2010. Since adoption, council has adopted numerous amendments to the plan. However, given that the document is over 10 years old, a cover-to-cover review was, to ensure relevancy, was warranted. Council adopted a terms of reference in the fall of 2022 for an MDP review, following which administration did background research and internal review. What happened? Administration met with other city departments, external stakeholders, and held council workshops to discuss if the policy, policies are still relevant and if any require attention. Administration worked on plan refinements and input from different stakeholders and presented the draft plan to the public in the spring of 2023. The review was completed in four phases over 14 months, leading us to the public hearing this evening. The plan review can be broken down into four categories. Housekeeping amendments include updates to baseline data and references to newer studies and plans. We revised the number of policies to recognize initiatives that have been completed or to create a more streamlined approach. Removed a number of policies because they were unsuccessful or not meeting the intended objectives, and we added new policies relating to the indigenous community, climate change, and economic development. One of the more significant policy revisions in this amendment is regarding limits on small lot development. Prior to 2003, the minimum lot width was 34 feet. Council, citizens, and administration identified issues related to small lot development, including lack of on-street parking, snow clearing challenges, and poor aesthetics. In 2006, council directed administration to eliminate small lots entirely from the land use bylaw. Recognizing the benefits of small lots, administration proposed limitations on small lot development rather than a complete removal. Consequently, a policy was introduced to restrict new neighborhoods to a maximum of 25% small lot development. Between 2006 and 2018, council and administration revised policies to address small lot development, implementing measures such as limiting driveway widths, introducing regulations for secondary suites, and more strategic application of lanes. In 2019, the development community requested that council provide additional opportunity for small lot development. Council and administration decided to temporarily ease the policy to allow for additional small lot development while administration would conduct additional research and monitor new small lot development areas to ensure that no issues have emerged. Currently, administration believes that small lot development can be successfully implemented without negatively impacting neighborhoods. However, concerns still exist in the community. Therefore, the proposed policy requires a phased approach that allows administration to monitor their utilization. Another policy revision example are the policies related to triple bottom line evaluation of development proposals. Administration supports the triple bottom line approach and considers social, fiscal, and environmental sustainability when reviewing statutory documents. However, measuring social and environmental issues relating to development is arbitrary and challenging. Furthermore, the city created a fiscal impact model and attempted to use it, but updating data and running the model was cumbersome and outcomes provided little valuable information. The new policy doesn't require specific measurable indicators, but it still supports considering each dimension when reviewing any plan or project. The plan also has a revised policy for environmental reserve setbacks, shifting from reliance on the riparian setback matrix model to the city's Bear Creek Corridor technical assessment, biophysical reports, geotechnical reports, and consultations with Alberta Environment for determining areas for environmental reserve. New economic development policies were added. One promotes the hospital as a hub for employment and healthcare cluster development, and the other focuses on infrastructure investment in the rural service area. New policies were added related to the indigenous community, and a new natural environment policy was added to address climate change. It is administration's recommendation that council give three readings to bylaw C 1462. This concludes our presentation, and we would be happy to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Now is an opportunity for council to ask administration questions. I recognize Councilor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Mr. Johnson, if these changes were not implemented, would there be any substantive change in how the city is managed through their planning process?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor.
Maybe I'll add a little bit because I don't think you're getting what I'm asking, but I feel that while the changes we are looking at particularly in regards to small lot management are important, they're truly not substantive. What people see today in Grand Prairie, they're still going to see tomorrow with the changes that will probably take place tonight. There's, there's no real change to the feel or look or management of the city as a whole.
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor. I, I think I get the question. No, I don't think there would be any significant change that the public would be aware of. I think the more, most significant change would be in some of the longer-term planning documents. If a developer were to come forward today or tomorrow with amendments to the outline plan showing their entire area's small lot development, then the MDP would provide administration with guidance to consider that request, and we would come through the process and come to council and amend that plan, or if it were a new plan, to adopt that plan. Given the rate of development these days, it would take, it could take quite some time for that area to be developed, and so the change would occur slowly over time, and as noted in the presentation, administration would be monitoring those areas. That's the most significant policy change in the plan that the public may be able to observe. The rest is more in practice in terms of how administration reviews documents and the position they take on the recommendation to council.
When I read the plan that I have in front of me, which is 86 pages long, I don't see any significant change to lifestyle or quality of life at Grand Prairie.
Through the mayor, no, there are no changes in regard to lifestyle and quality of life.
Thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just, my question's just around the policy 4.8, the triple bottom line, and I'm, I like this thought a lot, I'm just curious what that looks like inside the city's department. Can you walk me through like a fiscal, how we, how we would look at a project through that lens?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, specifically on fiscal. Basically, what we'd be doing is we'd be reviewing it in, basically like a big picture context. So an example would be like if you, if there was an area structure plan and a quarter section was shown as residential, and the proposal was to change it to industrial. Conceptually, we all know that the industrial area will be a boost to the assessment base, and residential is maybe not quite as valuable in that regard. So we would acknowledge that, but we wouldn't try and assign an actual dollar value to it. That's what the fiscal impact model attempted to do.
Ms. Downing?
If I could add to that, further to that, city departments would look at the plan to see what maintenance costs would be for the city. So if somebody was proposing to do a large fountain in the middle of the park that was going to have an impact on taxpayers and possibly more road surface than, than, that would cause an expense to the city long term, the, all of the relevant departments would be looking at the cost of the development long term on the city from a budget standpoint for the city. And then we also look at the economic impact of the development on the community, and that is in our reports to council as well, so.
And the triple bottom line is equally weighted.
Yes, so we're looking at the environmental, the social, and the fiscal, but both from a budget perspective of the city as well as an economic impact on the community.
Okay, so this, this wouldn't layer down, I guess in my head, I'm thinking of a, you know, developer comes in with their design standards. This wouldn't layer down saying, should we have three less streetlights or maybe one less park, because, you know, in that sort of scenario, just looking at the fiscal impact of what, what those infrastructure come, when, when they turn back to the city, this doesn't get into that layer of, of that, that's a design center, separate conversation.
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, that's correct. Okay, thanks.
Councilor Bosch?
Thank you. My question is on that, the triple bottom line as well. In regards to environmental and social, I'm sure you did a jurisdictional scan in this last 14 months. Is there any difficulties to achieve our expectations for the developers? I know environmental and social areas of concern are increasing all the time, so I'm just curious, at what levels have we increased that, if they're all carrying the same weight?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, to clarify, the existing policy in the municipal development plan states that these pillars should be measured, so environmental, fiscal, social, and what we're saying is these should be considered but not measured, because measuring environmental impact or social impact is arbitrary and challenging, and the results would be effectively useless. So rather than measure, we'll just consider it, and if we have, if there's environmental issues, we'll note that in the appropriate section of the report. We're not going to try and measure them.
Okay, so you had just said five minutes ago about weighing them equally. Can you just address how, what that means in comparison to what you just said?
Through the mayor, to clarify, that would be consider them, and I, I guess, to be fair, I'm not saying, I'm not sure that we would consider them equally, we would just consider them. They'd all be part of the discussion, and council would be provided information, and how individual counselors decide to weigh an environmental consideration versus a social versus a fiscal is all up to the individual politicians.
Okay, thank you, that's good.
All right, my last call for questions for administration. Seeing no one, I will now go to the presentation and submission portion of the public hearing, and I will ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of this municipal development plan C-1462. Welcome, gentlemen. Once you get settled up, please introduce yourself for those who may be watching at home.
Hi, Scott Previtz, representing the Urban Development Institute of Grand Prairie.
And Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering, also representing UDI and Build. So yeah, I guess mostly we just wanted to express just, just from industry's perspective and from the development and home building communities that we, we did have input on this, this plan and amendments, primarily on obviously the development components of it, so don't ask us any questions about triple bottom line. But anyway, regardless of that, we, we did spend a fair bit of time, actually a couple engagement sections, I think, with planners and, and, and to be honest, it was a very positive experience. We had a lot of things that we had been trying to kind of accomplish for several years now, I would say. You know, small lots is a good example of that, some multifamily, some, some prescribatory doc, or wording within, within the MDP that got removed, which is always beneficial to give us a little bit more, more flexibility in what we do and how we do, develop communities. So, so we appreciate what administration did with this, and I think we just wanted to express that.
Okay, well, thank you. Councilor Bressi, this is a question. Go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I did hear you folks talk a little bit about flexibility and some of the improvements on this, but just because there's big concern around this, I just want to ask a crystal clear question, and that is, I'm hearing some people concerned that when we touch the MDP, it's about getting more restrictive and about, and about making it more difficult for people to build the neighborhoods they want to build. As people that are developing our neighborhoods, is there anything new in here that makes you go, whoa, this is really restricting us, or this is really adding big new rules of red tape around what we can do?
I think this is a good, kind of a, we both agreed, it's a kind of a middle ground. Obviously, we always want more flexibility, but we understand that we, that there needs to be checks and balances put in place, so I think it's kind of a, a good middle ground between both sides. Yeah, I, I always, I like to bring up the fact that you go way back and you look, because everybody talks about small lots, and that's such a negative connotation, but if you look back in development and 20, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, if you take two, two neighborhoods, Pinnacle Ridge and O'Brien Lake, both of those neighborhoods, very different. You know, one has more of a starter homes, bigger homes, where another one is just all kind of bigger stuff. Those both were zoned, the whole quarter section on both of those were small lots, and then the market kind of took care of itself. So we're always kind of pushing to let the market take care, but, but we understand there has to be some sort of checks and balances and to keep everybody kind of working in for the right and to keep everybody kind of working for the right reasons. And yeah, so that's kind of where we look at it, is we want the market to dictate, but we understand that there has to be some parameters.
Counsel Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm wondering if there was anything that you fought for that did not get included. And I'm asking that because while we do look at all of our planning documents fairly regularly, as this was a rather major review, you're probably not going to see it come forward again for a while, unless, of course, the building community really pushes for something. So if you have a heads up that you will be pushing for something, that'd be great. If you're happy, please let us know.
Last chance, eh? No, for the most part, I think honestly, there are a few things that are not necessarily pertaining to this. Like we were just talking earlier about, right now, there's a multifamily redesignation. It's a bylaw, though, so it's not necessarily a part of this. But it kind of all does tie together, basically, instead of having to deal with very strict rules, again, around this is exactly what happens when you want to change something. I think there's definitely a movement towards understanding that we need to be a little bit more flexible. And the economy is not the same as it was in 2010 when this was adopted. So, you know, things, or 2003, sorry. So as things move, we do appreciate that they change. And I mean, obviously, there are amendments that kind of come and go there a little bit less major in nature and whatnot, which is appreciated. But I think for the most part, we were pretty happy we got most of the things we were looking for.
And to be honest, whenever we've had issues in between these times, when these MDP, these kind of documents are reviewed, council's been very open with us, coming in and explaining and bringing up issues and being receptive to those. So we've been dealing them kind of one-off.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I see no one else in the queue. I will ask a second time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this municipal development plan, C-1462. If so, please come forward and ask a third time if there's anyone here to speak in support of the municipal development plan review. Seeing no one else, I will now ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of the municipal development plan, C-1462. And if you are in opposition, please come forward and identify yourself. I'll ask a second time if there's anyone here to speak in opposition. Come on forward. Give you a moment to get set up.
Does it matter which one?
Nope, not at all. They're both on. And if you just identify yourself for those who might be watching online.
Certainly. My name is Life Anderson. I am here just to ask a question of administration, perhaps, or of this city council. And I thank you for the opportunity to sit here before you to ask for some clarification in regards to this. One of the points that was mentioned by administration was some updates, one of those pertaining to 11.17, which is on page 53 of the draft, or of the information that was sent out to all council members. This point goes into detail in regards to climate change and speaks in regards to climate acknowledges that climate change has potential to impact our community. Everyone has probably read that. My question is, will this lead to restrictions for us as community members? And is this, because it appears to be very vague in the way it is worded, lead to potential for us as city, or not city, sorry, as citizens of Grand Prairie, to be stuck into what could potentially be in the future 15-minute cities? Because it appears to be very vague. I don't know if anyone has any answers to that. It's just more of a general question and comment.
Mr. Johnson, would you be able to come forward and potentially expand on that a bit? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The policy, I'll read it word for word, states that council acknowledges that climate change has potential to impact our community and the operations of the organization. Council commits to proactively address the challenges posed by climate change by implementing effective mitigation and adaptation strategies. It is a broad, general policy statement, intentionally broad to just simply acknowledge council's commitment to being open to the idea of changing operations as needed and being aware that climate change could potentially have impacts to the organization and the community.
Counsel Bressi?
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I know for me personally, we talk about climate change, something very much on my mind is forest fires. And are there small things we need to do around fire smart principles for those fires so we don't have a summer like last summer? But also, I think that since 15-minute cities board was set, I think for me, I want to be really clear that for me personally, I don't want people to have the freedom to be able to walk to a grocery store or a park near their house, absolutely. But I also think those people should also have the freedom to hop in their car and drive past half a dozen neighborhood grocery stores and parks to go to Costco on the other side of town. And I've never heard anybody locally say anything besides that people should have the freedom to definitely build neighborhoods that have everything close, if that's what they want to build and live in, but also should have the freedom to hop in their car and drive through as many neighborhoods as they want to and they feel they need to for their quality of life.
Counsel Bosch?
Thank you. To me, and you correct me if I'm wrong, this has to do primarily with some of the examples that we've dealt with last summer in regards to withholding water because it was so dry, timber dry, and because of the forest fires near and around us. Is that basically what we're talking about here? I know we struggled with water when the fires were here, with having enough reserves. So that is a concern, because I'll not water my grass if it means that, you know, somebody in a hospital has water for whatever reason needed, right? So is it more environmental highs and lows that we've been facing currently, would you say?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, again, it's a broad policy statement. It can be interpreted to cover a wide spectrum of issues as it relates to operations and climate change. So there's no real specific goal in mind, short of just putting it on council's radar, stating it in the municipal development plan. There was nothing in the municipal development plan. So it's just
Okay, thank you.
A very high-level policy statement.
Counselor Blackmore?
There's a lot of things that it's really hard to see into the future, and climate change is one of those. We know the world in general is warming up, and it's changing how we do business in a variety of areas. But any significant change in how the city is managed will always come to this table and always be open to debate with the public. So while I think it's very fair to say that 15-minute cities does not sit easily on the minds of anyone in this room, should something happen to make it essential that we stop driving as much, or we stop the way we landscape our yards or change that, that's always going to come forward to public debate, because it's a significant change in the lifestyle of how we live in this region.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I will ask if there's a third time if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to this land use, sorry, rather, to this municipal development plan, C-1462. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and look to business arising, recognizing Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move the council give first reading to bylaw C-1462 be in the municipal development plan.
All right, so that motion is in order. This is first reading. No discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call the question.
Bressi in favor?
That carries unanimously. Counsel Blackmore, I'm thinking you're in the queue for second reading, discussion, or debate. Counselor O'Toole?
I move the council give second reading to bylaw C-1462.
All right, thank you for that. That motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate at second reading, recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will be voting in support of this motion. I feel that this revision of the municipal development plan was handled really well. There's nothing in there that is alarming, nothing that's going to change how we as Grand Prairie and see our city and how we like to live. And yet, some of the issues that were challenging for developers, more in interpretation than in actual development, have been dealt with in the rewrite. And so I give it my full support. This is one of very many municipal development plan rewrites that I've sat at the table for, and I appreciate the job administration did. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'll also be supporting the motion. I know it was part of the 2010 review on the other side of the table, and I just want to say thanks to administration and industry. It's nice when you folks can sit down and talk and maybe not agree on everything, but it seems like a lot more amicable spot than I feel like we were then, so I'm happy to support this motion.
All right, recognizing no one else in the queue, I will call the question on second reading. And that carries unanimously. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you. I move the council have third reading of bylaw C-1462 at this meeting.
That motion is in order, and in order for us to have third reading here tonight, this motion must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. I move the council give third reading to bylaw C-1462 be in the municipal development plan.
Right, that motion is in order. This is a motion. This is third reading for motion on the bylaw C-1462 being the municipal development plan. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is delegation business. First delegation here tonight was Mr. Ravinda Rupana. Mr. Ravinda will be approached from administration in regards to some of his questions in possibilities and opportunities for expansion in his business in regards to ride-share programs. So recognizing Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just wanted to confirm that's happening. We don't need a formalized motion for administration to do that. Okay, thank you.
All right, second delegation that was here tonight was Mr. Darrell Huko, and I will recognize Counselor Bressi.
Learn the new technology. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Our procedure bylaw doesn't give me the right to make lengthy replies right to delegations. But now that we're at the point where I'm meeting where I can address delegation business, I am eager to do so. And I want to be clear that I don't think Mr. Huko is worthless. I've never said any member of our community is worthless. Even if I vigorously disagree with them, I don't want any member of our community to feel that way. So I'm happy to apologize if I've made anyone feel that way. Also want to acknowledge that, other than asking me to do something not permitted by the procedure bylaw, I think his presentation was entirely in order because it was respectful and focused on me as an elected official. However, past delegations have not been respectful and focused on elected officials. They've said very mistrue, hurtful, and dangerous things about other members of our community. And some of those delegations were organizers of the march, hence why I think my post was needed and appropriate. I strongly believe that us as elected officials have a duty to stand up for residents who need standing up for, to champion the truth and show that our community is welcoming, safe, and inclusive, which makes me so profoundly saddened by what we have seen in these chambers and in the wider community by some voices that aren't representative of our community as a whole. I say enough is enough. I want to be clear that this isn't about potshots at me. That's just an unfortunate part of this job. But I'm very upset about what some delegations continue to say about other members of our community. So I think it supports getting on the record why I felt the need to make the post in question. Now, do I think that parents should be involved in kids' education? Of course I do. I'm deeply involved in the education of my children. I wish more parents were too. I also think it is perfectly in order to evaluate at what age, how, where, and with whom conversations about sexuality should occur, to make sure that they're happening in appropriate ways that best care for our children. It's okay to disagree with how to do that. I don't think anyone would disagree with those two statements I just made. However, we can promote these ideas while speaking truth and without dehumanizing, stigmatizing, demonizing, and belittling members of our community. And the march failed to accomplish this. Therefore, it deserved comment from community leaders. I've never once said anything negative about all the people who attended the march. Most attendees didn't have ill intent, but they are acting on very wrong information, misinformation that is being deliberately spread and causing huge damage. Whatever their intent, organizers of the march are perpetuating hurt in our community by saying things that increase the harassment and abuse of 2SLGBTQIA+ community members. Their false information has created real harm. According to Statistics Canada, between 2018 and 2022, police reported hate crimes related to orientation, gender, and sexuality more than doubled. Last summer, the Alberta RCMP took to media to talk about a very concerning spike in hate crimes being perpetrated against 2SLGBTQAlbertans. More relevant to me is Grand Prairie, where I don't have specific statistics. But I can tell you that I've heard directly from members of our local community that they are facing increasing harassment and abuse. I know council's heard that, too. I've seen and heard some of this abuse with my own eyes. I've had parents asked to meet with me to express concerns about the safety of their out children. I've had individuals tell me they can't safely use public washrooms, and couples tell me they're too afraid to hold hands in public. And I've listened to too many other members of our community tell me their heartbreaking stories that aren't mine to share. I had unprecedented numbers of residents reaching out to me in the weeks before the march, sharing that their fears were growing because of the behavior they were seeing in this community. And a big reason for the increasing harassment and abuse is because of misinformation, aggressive tactics, and inflammatory language being used by some, including organizers of the march. On the event website, in the very first sentence of education materials, it says that identifying as LGBT is the same as having a social contagion. If you know anything about the HIV pandemic, I don't think words can adequately convey how disgusting throwing words like contagion at our gay community is. There are incredibly disturbing videos filmed at several of the march fence across the country that had words so disconcerted I don't even have the heart to repeat them here. They received cheers. Looking more locally, we have seen the intentional spread of very hurtful misinformation. Some of it has been on display in these chambers by march organizers saying things that are so divorced from reality, respect, and compassion. I want to be clear. If the pictures organizers are painting of our schools were true, I'd be protesting too. But the accusations being made aren't based in reality. So let's set the record straight. Our educators are trying to convert students to passionate academics. Lifelong learners is all they want our kids to be, nothing else. Our educators, looking for resources to help make all kids feel welcome and safe, regardless of sexuality and gender, isn't about trying to push an ideology. It's about trying to keep kids who have huge risk factors safe from abuse, mental health crisis, homelessness, suicide, and self-harm. Our educators desperately want parents to be part of their schools. They bemoan how little parents are willing to get involved. They aren't trying to push parents out, quite the opposite. Our educators are dedicated professionals who uphold the dignity of students. To say that they've already brought or are likely to bring litter boxes into our schools is absurd. And worst of all, to suggest that trans, bi, and gay people are a danger just for being in a school, or that efforts to make all kids safe, regardless who they love or what they look like, is grooming, I'm so outraged to have heard that in these chambers. Because it isn't just woefully incorrect, it isn't just hurtful. It also puts 2SLGBTQ folks in physical danger. Because whatever its intent, it encourages hate. Earlier, I talked about the statistics of gender and sex-motivated hate crimes and the rising harassment happening across our country and our community. This is happening because 2SLGBTQ folks are being dehumanized and painted as monsters. To a lesser degree, so are our educators and healthcare workers. When people are vilified as other and described as out to get children, it shouldn't surprise anyone that they become targets of abuse. And that is not acceptable. By going unchecked, statements like we've seen in these chambers are undermining the social and economic fabric of our community. More important, they're undermining the quality of life and safety of some residents who face historic and ongoing discrimination. It is so important for us to recognize the real lived experiences of our 2SLGBTQ residents and to call out the misinformation and abuse being hurled their way. So I'll always continue to say very clearly to all of our residents, Grand Prairie people think you belong here, they want you to be safe, and they know that your rights matter. I trust the council feels I trust the council feels the same way I do about the importance of truth, inclusion, and safety. I hope that our residents will continue to hear that clearly from us. Thank you, Mayor Clayton, for allowing me to share those thoughts.
Thanks for your comments. Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. When I think about this issue, one of the things that occurs to me is that as a nation, we have lost the ability to debate openly and unemotionally. And this is an example, I think, of an unsuccessful story where the debate has not been free and it has not been unemotional. And I would hope going forward that we become better at that, that we learn how to debate with each other, how to accept that we all have different points of view, and having that point of view doesn't make you right or wrong, but it does give you the option and the ability to debate your position. And you should be able to do that without calling other people names or just simply saying, you're wrong because you disagree with me. That's not how Canadians should be with each other. So I hope that this discussion gives us the opportunity to step back and think, yes, I don't agree with you, but I understand that you have a right to your position, and I'm not angry with you because of it. I feel that it's a sad thing how angry people seem to be these days, and I hope that this is simply a swing in the pendulum. And over time, we'll come back to the center where we can, in fact, have serious, solid, and energetic debate on a wide variety of topics without it being a negative experience for anyone.
Councillor Bosch.
Thank you. I'd like to say I'm no expert on a lot of things, and I'm willing to learn about many, many things out there. But I do have experience in the education field. I was working in the education field for nearly two decades. And I have to tell you, the colleagues that I work with love your kids. They are there for your kids. It's not, it's easy to say that, you know, picking your kid up and they had a bad day and it's somebody else's fault, or maybe it's your own kid's fault. But I can honestly tell you, the people that I have worked with in those nearly two decades are there for a reason. They're there because they care about the job that they're doing. They are there to improve the lives of the kids that are going to those schools. And I was predominantly junior, senior high. So in those age groups, there is big highs and lows going on constantly. And to manage that, it's not easy. And it certainly isn't easy when you don't have the support of the parents. I'm not saying nobody's supporting them here. All I'm saying is, go talk to them. Go talk to the teachers of your kids. Go speak to the administration of your kids. I have three kids. I've done it a number of times for a variety of reasons. So I think we're okay to talk and have discussions. And I've had people in my own family ask me questions about the school system. And I was very honest with them. What they're hearing in some cases isn't true, and it is not what the people that I work with would do to these kids. So do I have the answers for everything? No. Is there issues that come in a school system? Probably, yes, for sure. But I don't think the majority of people out there are out to be negative to others.
Thank you for that. With that, that's the close of the delegation business. And I apologize, my screen shut down next. We will go to, thank you. Councilmember reports. I'm going to start with councillor O'Connor today.
I knew it, you were going to start with me. Okay, well, we've had a very interesting since our break. I'm glad we had a great break. The first thing that we did was councillor Wade Plott and I did a mock council with homeschooled kids. And it was like the joy that you see from these kids when they come in here and they sit in these chairs. It moves you. And they asked very, very good questions. They are well behaved. So I want to thank councillor Wade. That was pretty awesome. Highlights, I was able, I want to thank our mayor for inviting councillors to go to the first ever summit for mid-sized city mayor's council. And we are normally, it's not our venue, but they, I think she felt that we needed to be there as councillors to be able to understand all the issues. There are 25 communities there representing 1 million people in the province and 26 ministers, is it? And they had a great program, and it made me feel that I was working on me at this conference. And I felt so much better. And I have a quote of, "Lay it to the end, your worship," and I'll just have a quote from one of our presenters. And the next thing, went to the Grand North Winter Fest, and it was cool. I became the Jenga champion, self-proclaimed. I was six and one, winning at Jenga. So I was able to get families to come and take part. And, you know, it was, and then I was able to go outside and see all the people carving on ice. And there was more people outside in the cold than there was inside. And one of the highlights was the Francophone Association doing their maple taffy. And that is so incredible. And a big shout out for the ladies for doing that. That was amazing stuff. And then we watched the Storm beat the Olds. And they beat them again. They were losing, and then they come back and won it, and it was a great game. And so my quote from the conference, sorry, give me one.
I'm a little concerned because there was a few.
Well, there was one, but this one stood out for me. And we look all the time, but we don't see. We listen, but we don't hear. In this world where there's so much noise, we've been missing more and more these days. The thing that matters most, we were never meant to do this alone. And that's by Jody Carrington, Dr. Jody. And that really hit me. And anyway, thanks again, Mayor, for having us go down there. It was awesome. Thank you.
Thanks councillor O'Connor. Councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Mayor Given, geez, whoa. I was amazed. Hey? Well, I probably owe you something for that, hey? Sorry. Wow. Yeah, there wasn't, yeah. I had a moment thinking, oh, councillor O'Connor, I got sidetracked. But thanking him for bringing cards as always on the trip and actually getting to play card games with other municipal mayors and caucus members was a highlight of that trip for me for the mid-sized mayors. The mid-sized mayors committee or council we went to is part of AB Munis, and for me was great because I've struggled with AB Munis, and for me, this was a really good forum because it was mid-sized mayors and councils. So the conversations were more direct to what I feel we need to go do when we go to those conferences. So I really did appreciate that. Councillor O'Connor made it really fun with the kids, bringing them treats, and it was lots of fun to do that with you. I really enjoyed that. I didn't do any of those last term with Mayor Given, but I will do more this term with Mayor Clayton. And my other highlight was I had a library board meeting. We had four new appointees that we appointed just at Christmas, and happy to say all four were very engaged in the first meeting we had, including our chief Lemmy over here. Also was our first meeting with our new director, Hayley McCullough, who I think is going to be a great director for the library moving forward. Want to thank Deb Normington for and all the work with the HR committee. It's a lot of work to go through hiring a new person when you're a chair of a committee, especially as volunteer. In the meeting, we discussed potentially opening more hours, setting up signage and more capability to do Zoom meetings, which I don't think we're going to pause on, and we approved the 2024 operating budget. And that's my report. Thanks.
Thanks for your update. Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I too attended the Midsize City Mayor's Caucus. This is a group of 25, I think, municipalities across Alberta, and as councillor O'Connor said, represents about a million people. I particularly enjoyed the chance to see Minister MacGyver, Minister of Municipal Affairs, and Minister Ellis, who's Minister of Safety and more, as well as Deputy Premier. It was interesting to see them interact with a group of people that they felt quite relaxed and responsive with, and there was not, it wasn't as stiff as some of those politicians versus the other politicians can be. The other thing I have to report on is I did meet with the three new board members coming into the airport commission. That would be Terry Sudnick, Derek Case, and Clint Osborne. And I'm really looking forward to working with the three of them. They were all three quite vocal during the meeting. And you just can't really have a successful board if people aren't willing to speak up. So I think that'll be good. I was also joined at that meeting with our vice chair, who will take over for me in six months, Bobby.
Dawson.
Dawson. I always want to call her.
Moeman.
Moeman, yeah. Sorry, sorry, Bobby, sorry.
Same person.
And that concludes my roundtable, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks councillor Blackmore. Councillor Bressi.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Giving me the mic is always appreciated. Sorry. I do want to really highlight something councillor O'Connor said, and that was the self-proclaimed Jenga champion, because I noticed that I hung out at the Jenga station a couple times and I was never challenged. So if that's what it takes to become the champion, I respect that, actually. But seriously, Grand North was incredible. The highlight for me was getting to watch my children do a very poor but very earnest job at ice carving and getting to learn that skill right while they're getting to watch the actual pros make something incredible right next to them. What a cool artistic experience that I was thankful for. And I was thankful for maple taffy when I had my first one, maybe two, definitely by the time I'd had my third or fourth. But it was a great event that I want to say thank you to our staff. And I know we got really unlucky hitting it on the hopefully biggest cold stop of the year and the one that snuck up on us completely. And I know that hurt attendance, and it was really disappointing to see a couple venues have to shut down for safety. So just, I just want to give a pat on the back to our staff, who I still think put on an incredible event. And thank you to everybody who braved the weather to get out there. Midside City Mayor Caucus was great. I think for me, I really appreciate the informal conversation, getting to talk to people and exchange war stories. And for me, definitely a lot of councils dealing with some very hard things in terms of untrue heated rhetoric that we're seeing right now. And on one hand, it was really encouraging to see that we've actually got a pretty good in our community. Our council is very awesome and very mature and very forward-thinking and very good at disagreeing in healthy ways. And that's not always the case. And our community overall is very ready to engage in healthy, good discourse. And so we can always get better, but it was encouraging to see what's going on elsewhere, but also sad for colleagues who are struggling. The last thing I'll highlight is I got to go to a number of meetings for the Winter Games because they're only 31 days away. So if anybody's not signed up to volunteer yet, you should come out and volunteer. It's a free way to get to go see some of these young athletes from across the province and welcome to Grand Prairie. So there's a few more ambassador spots if you want a sweet jacket. I also hear councillor O'Toole needs lots of people to cook food alongside him. There's, you good? Okay. Just get, sorry, he's just getting it out there for them to eat, but.
Not cooking it.
Whether you want to serve food or help with admissions, or help with security, or help scorekeep, or whatever your inclination is, we need about 300 more volunteers. There's a role for you in the game somewhere.
Great. Thanks councillor Bressi. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'm starting off with business here. Community Futures Orientation and Board Meeting was held last week, and get a lot of questions over the years. What does Community Futures? It's organization that the communities support in growing businesses, getting business loans, tools needed to run a business, mentoring, guidance, and support of the rural small business owners and entrepreneurs in Alberta. What are you looking for help with? And it could be starting a business, growing a business, buying a business, or selling a business. Grand Prairie region, we have many loans out helping businesses. And with that, there's an opportunity to get training, guidance, and financial support. And when it comes to guidance, there's a team of people there that have years and years of experience, know what works and know what doesn't work. But also, they're willing to learn your business that may be different because of new ideas in the future. Let's build your business in the Grand Prairie region. Anytime you need to contact them, I can give you the phone number, and it is 780-814-5340. And they are in 214th South Place. And Community Futures is having a community impact luncheon named Dreamers and Doers, and your opportunity to join the Community Futures as we celebrate 38 years of community impact. Hear our story from the perspective of our staff, our board, and clients, and find out the amazing initiatives that we have to go on the go. It'll be held Tuesday, January 30th, so not too far away. It's from 11 till 2 at the Teresa Sergeant Hall. Once again, if you want tickets, you can phone that previous number. At the beginning or the end of December, I attended a CCW with host of council. I went to the Decor Armory's Air Show, and it's coming together quite fine. I also attended something that I haven't been to in a number of years because of the epidemic, and that was a school concert. I went to two of them in one week, at St. Patrick's Catholic School with my grandchildren, as well as Ivy Macklin Public School. I attended New Year's Eve at Muscosipi Park. I seen skating. I think the pond had more skaters there that night than I've ever seen in my life. There was music, and there was fireworks. Also, I attended an Alberta Winter Games meeting regarding food services. And what we're looking for is people to dish up the food, package boxes of food to go to different venues that are not in the school. We also attended, I actually took my wife out to the Grand North Winter Fest on Friday. She wasn't too keen on Saturday night either, but it was cold. She wanted to stay on the couch and have a blanket over, but I did get her out Saturday. We didn't stick around for the hockey game, but it was great to see the grand, official grand opening of Bonnet's Energy Suite, which I got to watch the hockey game with or at. And the Grand Prairie Storm were winners both nights and on the weekend. So with that, that was my report, and that's what I accomplished.
Councillor Bosch.
Thank you. I attended the Storm Board Meeting, and with that, I'll just, a few pointers. They had the Billett Family Night, which is always a great night to appreciate the second families for these kids. There is a reminder for the Junior Storm Spring ID Skates. It's important to get your kids to those. This is a component of community involvement, aside of other things that they've done here recently. This week, they'll be, or this last weekend, they did an Alzheimer's Awareness Skate on behalf of Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And antidotely, there is also a, I believe the sundial will be lit up blue as of tonight for the next couple of weeks, as is the city center sign, both of those to support the Alzheimer's Awareness Month. New Year's in the city, yeah, we did that. New Year's in the City, yeah, we did that. We had our kids home, so that was great, going out. Took them to the dream home, so there's limited time on that. Make sure you go check it out, get a ticket, support your community. Try it Day is coming January 27th. Call the Sport Connection or book online. There is going to be dozens and dozens of different kinds of sports and activities that your kids can try out and see if it's something that they want to spend some time with in the future. I was lucky to spend a couple hours with a potential doctor coming to, hopefully to the, to our city, and if everything works out well, lovely, lovely person. I'd like to thank our staff for braving all the cold and doing the quick change-up for the Winter Fest. That's discouraging, you know? The weather can play with a lot of different things and not always in the best way. We're one rainstorm from a concert being a disaster too. So winter or summer, we always have that aspect to deal with. And lastly, congratulations to Greg Rettell as the second superintendent for the Grand Prairie Municipal Police Force. Highly decorated and experienced officer was inducted today, or sworn in today. So that's my report.
Thanks, Counsel Bosh. Many of the things that I have attended have been mentioned, so I'll be relatively brief. I had an opportunity to have a meeting with Jeff Burry from Northern Petrochemical to get an update in regards to their initiative in the Greenview Industrial Gateway. Also with Counsel O'Toole and CEO Burke, attended possibly someone else. I apologize if I forget someone, but attended the Aqua Terra Zone 3 Solar Project Ribbon Cutting, which is a solar project to fund the lift station in Zone 3. So that was a great initiative. Attended with Mayor Potter from Sex Smith, the Grand Prairie Regional Rec Committee, Regional Recs Scavenger Hunt. We did a draw for the prize. It was an initiative where people went online and entered, and the prize pack was quite a prize pack where you have an opportunity to experience many tourism amenities across the region. With many of my colleagues, attended the Latin Association Christmas Event. Just briefly on that event, very proud of that organization. They've been trying for many years to get enough people to initiate something as what you would think is relatively simple, as a Christmas gathering, and they're finally at a large enough organization to be able to put that together. So congratulations to them. It was, although many of us had multiple events at night, I was there briefly, and it was a great event, and it looked like there was going to be a lot of fun had for those in attendance. With Chief Glavin, met with PACE and administration from there to talk about some of their future plans, which include potential renovation within the building for better utilization of the space. Had with InvestGP representatives, had a dinner with a new doctor who has signed to come to town, who is not only a doctor who will oversee operations within emergency, he was an addiction specialist doctor, so a great addition to our community, and was happy to hear that he had signed on. As a result of our workplace study and the report that was recently released in partnership with the County of Grand Prairie, Northwest Polytech, and the Chamber of Commerce, and the MDE Greenview, had multiple media interviews to talk about what the growth looks like in jobs in our community, in our region. So that was, it's always a pleasure to be able to talk about growth and to talk about and highlight our regions. So I was thankful to be able to do that. Met with Emily Nolan-Dick, just to get a brief update, but I know that there is in council's calendar a meeting coming up with him, as well as Emily Ronne-Weeb, where we have a chance to remind them of our advocacy strategies and priorities, as well as them an opportunity to update us on things that they're working on. Met with Northwest Polytech and representatives of the trades industry to talk about opportunities in the region and how we can enhance and incentivize youth to get engaged in trades, as well as how we can advocate to the province for opportunities for increased enrollment, as well as efficiencies within trade certificates. Had a meeting with CEO Burke, as well as Chief Lemieux, with representatives from Mustard Seed, who, if you recall, are new to our community, are taking, as of February 1st, will be operating the Coordinated Care Campus. It was a great opportunity to meet with them and here, as well as with Ms. Hughes, to see that integration within our own organization and how that new provider will be a great added provider. And they're very optimistic and were very positive to talk about the collaboration that they see within our existing service providers. They were very impressed with, when they met with industry leaders within that sector, the collaboration that they were seeing. It wasn't a competitive environment, and they were really positive and looking forward to coming to our community. So look forward to meeting more and for council to get to know them a little better. And then, as mentioned, excuse me, had a, wanted to give a shout out to the organizers, our administration, our teams, as well as the sponsors who were nimble at Grand North Winter Fest. There was some amenities and offerings as part of that event that we had to change as a result of the extreme weather conditions. And I hear from administration that sponsors were nimble, people were willing to make changes, and it just is a true testament of the diversity and the entrepreneurial efforts of our community and how, when it's called upon, we can change things and be nimble and still provide an incredible event. Had the opportunity to go to the Storm Game. They won both games this weekend, so congratulations to them. Always happy to see them to beat other mid-sized cities, including Canmore and Olds. Makes me proud when our team wins. So, but again, a shout out to those who put on the Grand Northwest Winter Fest. We've had it for four years, and it was one year of severe cold, so I think that it was a great opportunity for people to get out, although it was very cold. So with that, that is my report. I wish you good evening and thank you for being here. Meeting adjourned.